All right, welcome to the legislative session for July 13th. Calling the meeting to order. Ms. Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
She's present.
Yep.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Try again. Councilmember Kinnear. She is present also. Councilmember Mum. I don't see Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, oh.
Councilmember Stratton. Councilmember Wilkerson. Councilmember Wilkerson is also present. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Mum is absent at this time.
All right, just, we're doing, having some technical difficulties hearing all the people, so we're gonna try something. Councilmember Burke, can you say hello to us so we can test this? One more time? Okay, all right, it's working now. Thanks, everyone. All right, I think we're gonna start tonight with an administrative report from Spokane Arts with Melissa Huggins, our executive director. So I see you there, Melissa, if you wanna tell us what's going on.
Hi, everyone. Hannah Lee, is it easier for you to show the slides? Or do you want me to pull them up?
It's easier for you to do it, if that works, but if you have connection problems, I totally can.
Okay, I can do it. Bear with me here and I'll share my screen. Thank you, councilmembers, for hosting me this evening. As you know, I serve as the Director of Spokane Arts and, uh, it's not giving me the option to share content here, Hannah Lee. I think I might have to be enabled to share.
Try it again.
Okay, so, let's see here. If you don't mind, I'm going to share in this view because I have notes to keep me on track and we have so much to get through. So again, I really thank you for your time on behalf of Spokane Arts. And as you know, Spokane Arts is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that represents the joint efforts of the Spokane Arts Fund and the Spokane Arts Commission. We were founded by a group that includes the City of Spokane, the Public Facilities District, Business Spokane, and the Downtown Spokane Partnership. And today, I'd like to run through, I have a couple of first quarter updates that we did not get to cover the last time that I presented to council, some second quarter updates, and then we'll look ahead a little bit to what's coming up. So I wanted to give a brief update on the activities of the Poet Laureate, our wonderful poet laureate, Chris Cook. He has been doing quite a bit of virtual hosting. So he's been hosting Three Minute Mic, which is a poetry open mic anyone can sign up and share their original work. That is every first Friday through Antis via Zoom. He's also been co-hosting Broken Mic each Wednesday evening via Zoom and working with KYRS to showcase poetry from the Poet Laureate. And he's been sharing a lot of resources in poetry on various social media pages to both sharing poems of hope and inspiration and related current events and also tools and prompts and things that people can use for poems. As you know, poetry on podium, or at the podium, has been on hold because of the pandemic and our rotating neighborhood lit crawls are also on hold until 2021. So this is a happy update. So many of you are familiar with the Poetry Out Loud program. It is a national program that encourages high school students to engage with classic and contemporary poetry. Spokane Arts serves as the Eastern Washington Region Coordinator. And back in January, we hosted those Eastern Washington Region Finals. And our top two finalists were these wonderful students. On the left here is Jordan Maddox, who was a junior at Mead High School, and then Madeline Luther, who was a senior at Open Ogden High School. So they were the top two finalists from our Eastern Washington Region, and then they advanced to the state competition. And the state competition was held in March, right before all of the pandemic shutdowns, but we're happy to report that the two of them placed first and second. So Jordan Maddox, our Mead High School student, I know, it's very exciting, placed first at the state level, which in a normal year would have earned her a berth to compete at the national competition. And of course, she didn't have that opportunity this year. So our hope is that once, you know, things return to normal, maybe in the next six or nine months, we'd love to bring Jordan to city council so that she can meet you all and perhaps perform a poem. And because she was a junior this year, she will be eligible to compete in next year's competition, and so of course, we hope that that will be the case. The last time that I spoke with council, I gave you some updates on the emergency relief fund that we had created for individual artists. And I won't belabor too many details of that, other than to say that we are in the process right now of winding down that emergency fund and making final distributions. We did have some wonderful community members who were still making, you know, $15 or $20 donations in the month of June, and those have added up to a few more individual artist grants. So after we close out this emergency fund, then we'll be directing artists to apply for Saga grants, which I'll speak about later, as I said. And this was all, again, this Artist Release Fund is entirely privately funded, private donations, community donations, which is not funded with public dollars. But we will be releasing a report that shows the final staff about all of the different kinds of artists who receive these grants, you know, what disciplines, what demographics, that sort of thing. So at the time that we last reported to you, 51% of the grantees were either artists of color, trans, non-binary, or artists with disabilities. So we'll have updated staff on that for you very soon. Like you, we have been spending the past few months doing a tremendous amount of advocacy on behalf of our community and our sector. So I've summarized that quite a bit here, and I won't go into too much detail. We worked with GSI to ensure that some self-employed artists could access free PPE distribution from the County Cares Act funding. And of course, like many of you, probably all of you, I have been serving on, you know, countless task forces and committees related to advocating for our sector. And we've also been meeting virtually with our federal representatives to communicate the hardships that the creative sector is facing. And just as a reminder, when I talk about the creative sector, the creative economy, as of 2018, there were over 11,000 creative jobs in the city of Spokane, which is 11% of the overall workforce. And that number does not even include self-employed artists or freelance. So last time that we spoke, we talked a lot about the, I gave some updates on the landscape of resources in terms of federal aid and state aid. And the, I've included some detail here of what was actually distributed and who that reached, but the quickest way to summarize it is that there is not enough federal and state aid, of course, for the creative sector, and not enough of it, not nearly enough of it, is reaching Eastern Washington. So just one quick example, the NEA distributed over $45 million in direct grants of $50,000. And about $850,000 of that was distributed to Washington State, but there was only one Spokane organization who received one of those grants, and there were only two Eastern Washington organizations, one in Tiotin and one in Spokane, who benefited from that NEA funding. So we're doing a lot of advocating at the state and federal level about how our sector is in desperate need of support, and I just wanted you to be aware of that. So some specific updates about Saga, our grant-making program. And as a reminder, this grant-making program is funded by a percentage of the city's, a small percentage of the city's admissions tax. And the grant applications have three categories, large organizations, small to mid-size organizations, and individual artists, and they're evaluated on three criteria, community impact, artistic merit, and effectiveness. So our plans for this year, which obviously we adjusted in the face of the pandemic, we had planned to award $125,000 this year, and we bumped that up to $150,000 in response to the needs that we were seeing in the community. So we switched round two to a rolling deadline, as I had explained to you. So we have made a number of awards during that rolling grant period that I will highlight a couple of them. So there are some visual arts projects, there are a lot, various projects that will happen later this year or at the beginning of next year. Each grantee has one full year to execute the activities described in their grant proposal. And so, of course, many of these will happen a little bit later. But here are some activities of these recent grantees. So the Go Art Center, which is a ceramic studio, is offering a clay-to-go program so that people can spend 15 bucks on a bucket full of clay and supplies and receive instruction about how to use that. We also awarded a grant to the Botanical Alchemists, who have been creating these beautiful floral public art, temporary public art installations across various city parks and in public places that people just stumble upon and discover. And we also made a round two award to Terrain, who was granted operational support. And as you know, as you may have seen on social media, in addition to the Black Lives Matter mural that they are working on within the Bureau of Local Artists, incredible project, they are also doing a online art-making celebration featuring black artists. So every day of July, a local black artist will be featured in the Terrain Gallery, and they can make and interpret and do and share that day however they like. So we've got the information in the slideshow there for people to access that through Terrain's social media. With the pandemic shutdowns, we have made a number of adjustments to shift everything in Chase Gallery to be virtual. So those of you that have been in and out of City Hall can see that the artwork is installed on the gallery's walls, but it is also available online in a virtual gallery, and we're finding all kinds of creative ways to share that artwork and get people to engage with that and ideally purchase those artist pieces. And then I have some mural updates to run through here, lots of exciting mural projects. So a few of you are familiar with the Temporary Mural Project that we embarked on to cover up the boarded windows in downtown Spokane with art by local artisans. So we had six or seven different sites where local businesses agreed to offer up their site, and Spokane Arts was able to use grant funding and sponsorship from some of those businesses to pay the artists to create these murals, many of which are inspired by the Black Lives Matter protests, inspired by current events. And so our hope is to repurpose these murals and be able to, even though they're temporary in their current location, we're hoping to reinstall them at another public location so that they can continue to be enjoyed, so we'll keep you updated about that. And then this, I wanted to show you an image of this in-progress mural, which is located, this is part of Councilmember Kinnear's Alleyway Innovations Pilot Project, which is located in the alley behind Soulful Soup. So this is the second mural to be installed in that alleyway. The image on the left is the rendering, and I'll just read you the artist's description here. "Two kids live on opposites of the world that can be in the water at the same time. In the U.S., the pool will be opened all day till evening; however, evening is actually the time for outdoor pools in China to start. This piece of design reminds audience that although people grow up in different ways among different scenery, cultures, and people, they also enjoy many of the same things. People from opposite sides of the world may have many differences, but many similarities as well. We are all human after all." So that is our wonderful artist, May Lynn, and you can see the progress of that mural on the right, and she will be working on that for the next couple of weeks, and you're welcome to stop by there and wave hello. And then we also have these basketball court murals in progress, and these are a partnership between Spokane Arts and Hoop Town with permission from Spokane Parks and sponsorship from Multicare. And pictured here in the center is Tiffany Patterson. She is the lead artist for this mural on the left, which will be installed in Peaceful Valley. And the person pictured on the right here is her mentee. So we have started a program where artists of color can train with experienced muralists. So we will be training, her name is Bella, the artist. We'll be paying Bella a stipend to learn alongside Tiffany. She'll assist on the installation. She's learning about the process, the materials, the techniques. So we're very excited about that. And then we have the images for the next two courts that will be installed in the upper right, that will be installed in Chief Gary Park later this summer, and the bottom right will be installed in Fort Murphy Park in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood. And I just have a couple more slides here. I know there are so many updates, and I know that I'm very grateful for your time. So we have these, one of Spokane Arts programs is called Music Video Jams, and this is a way for emerging musicians to be paired with emerging filmmakers, and they create a music video together over the course of two weeks. And then we will have a virtual screening of these completed music videos. So it gives the filmmakers, you know, a new piece of work for their portfolio, it gives the musicians a leg up in terms of promoting their work and gaining audience. So we'll be announcing those selected artists this week. The hope is that if public health regulations allow, that they will be able to film later this summer or at the beginning of September, observing all of the public health and safety regulations, and then we'll be able to have that virtual screening. I also wanted to put the annual arts award on your radar, the end of September, Saturday, September 6th. This will also be a virtual event. The goal of this event is to celebrate the past year in arts and culture. We hand out some awards, yes, but the focus of the event is really on celebrating creativity, celebrating the entire cultural community. So we usually have, you know, performances, poetry, music, film, and so we're working, we're working hard right now to make that into a virtual event. And then just super briefly, I will give you a couple of public art updates. We are very, very happy that the Public Plaza, featuring these sculptures by Smoker Marchand and photography by Spokane Tribe member Jeff Ferguson, that the Public Plaza is now open and that people can go visit all of this wonderful artwork that tells the story of Spokane Tribe history, from creation stories and photography of current Spokane Tribe members and much more. We also have another public art piece in progress that is set to be installed later this year by Indigenous artist Sarah Thompson Moore, who's looking very closely at the Spokane Tribe to create this sculpture that mirrors a traditional paintwork. And then we are also, we have a couple of open calls for artists open right now for new artwork associated with the Sportsplex. And this image here is from another city, this is from Montreal, of an outdoor illuminated art installation. But we have the call open for proposals for art at the Sportsplex right now, in addition to various projects underway related to the city line, Spokane Public Libraries, and some other projects. So I know I went through that very, very quickly, and it's a lot of information at once, but I would be happy to field any question.
Any questions for Melissa? Any questions for Melissa? Not see anything, super informative, so you guys are so amazing.
Council President?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Stratton.
I just wanted to say really quick, I serve on the Arts Board with Melissa, and she does a great job, and everybody should know the work that goes on behind the scenes. And even in times of challenges like we're going through right now with COVID, things haven't stopped, and a lot of that is because we have a director in Melissa that is really passionate and cares so much about this community to make sure that the work gets done and people get to experience art, even though it's not normal circumstances. So thank you, Melissa, you're doing a great job, we appreciate you. And I can't wait to start our Poets, Poetry at the Podium soon when we're back. Thanks.
Thank you very much for those kind words, I really appreciate it. And thank you, everyone, for your time. I am very grateful.
Okay, and since we started, thank you again, Melissa, and I just wanted to say, my favorite part was the fact that you're mentoring the future artists, and somehow, in the middle of everything, you're figuring out how to develop the next generation of artists, so keep up all that great work. Since we started, Councilmember Mum has joined us, so if we can add her to the list. And I also just wanted to announce at our 3:30 meeting, as sometimes happens, we made some changes to the agenda. So the two ordinances regarding landlord tenants is going to be deferred until October 12th because the Collaboration Group of Tenants and Landlords is working well together. There was a sewer easement issue on for tonight, that's been deferred for a week, to get a little more information. We added a resolution about mosquito devices, and there is a vote on the veto by the mayor. And then we also substituted an ordinance on homelessness that was currently in the packet, and if you want to see the new language, you can go to a council Facebook page and it's there if you want to see it. It's still substantively the same, but we got some good feedback from the Continuum of Care Board and the Community Health and Human Services Board, and so we made a few changes to that as well. The other thing we added was boards and commissions, if you want to read that, Ms. Vister.
Appointment of Anwar Peace to an at-large seat on the Spokane Human Rights Commission for a term of June 29, 2020 to December 31, 2022.
And this was deferred briefly for Mr. Peace to have a chance to talk with the Human Rights Commission about a few things, and they have completed that and endorsed him, and my understanding is the mayor's endorsement still stands, and we've brought it back to council. So is there any comment about that? Seeing none, then all those in favor of appointing Mr. Peace to the position as read, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
And any abstentions? All right, Mr. Peace is confirmed. That brings us to our special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C-35918, amending ordinance number C-35565, passed by the City Council, December 11, 2017, and entitled. Oh, they can't. I'll try to speak louder. Ordinance C-35918, amending ordinance number C-35565, passed by the City Council, December 11, 2017, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2018, making appropriations to various funds, departments, and programs of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, and providing its shell tech effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in. Police funds special events from law enforcement services, $76,678 to overtime uniforms, same amount. This action recognizes unbudgeted revenue and expenditure pertaining to acceptance of a Spokane Transit Authority contract for law enforcement presence on buses.
And by way of explanation, for a brief time, the STA buses weren't collecting fares, and they contracted with the police department to provide some extra security. That work is now done, the fares are being collected, the police are not working on the buses in that, but we're still doing the financial, truing that up, and that's the STA paying back the city for that time. There's no public comment requested on that, is there any council comment?
I have a comment, Council President.
Yes, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring to attention the language that was used in the white paper on this. It specifically said that there was issues on the bus due to COVID because it was fare-free, and I just think we can't really jump to that conclusion because there's also a pandemic going on, there's a lot of other things going on, and I just can't, I just hate that we pinpointed on not paying fares as a way to say that there was danger in the buses and that there was no other reason possible that there could be any sort of unhealthy behavior on the buses. So I just like to watch how we put things into our briefing papers, because I feel like that was discriminatory and unhelpful to the situation of what people in poverty are going through. So that's my only comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you, sorry. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, passes seven to zero. And next up, resolutions and final ordinances.
Resolution 2020-0045, approving the appointment of Amber Richards as Director of Human Resources for the City of Spokane.
All right, and I believe we're gonna have the mayor. Mayor Woodward, welcome to our meeting, and take it away.
Where am I on here?
Now you are, now we hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that, Amber and I, she's just so engaged, we're just having a great conversation here, so. Thank you, council, tonight, for taking up the confirmation of Amber Richards for the position of Human Resources Director. I know most of you have had a chance to talk with her. She's been in civil service, heading up that department for, gosh, two years now, and has been very active with Human Services. She's fantastic, we got to know her especially well during the first part of COVID, the Emergency Operations Center, where she was tasked with, I think her military background served very well in logistics out at the EOC, and as I mentioned before, Amber is someone who, you give her any task, she can do it. She's got some great ideas for Human Resources. I looked for someone who was going to put people over who was going to put people over process and improve the process. So, we have found that candidate. So, she is here if you want to hear from her. I think she does have a statement to make.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Amber. If you move just slightly closer to the mayor, we'll see you a little better.
Oh, all right.
There you go.
Does that work?
That looks great. Yeah.
Good evening, councilmembers. And thank you for the opportunity to just provide a brief statement. I just wanted to say that I am really excited and honored to be considered for this position. I've had the benefit in my career to work on really strong teams and work for some really excellent organizations in the past. And I think they've all had some common traits, which are, you know, they have a strong human resources function. They really invest in their human resources. They look at it as a core function, like the roots of the organization. And that enables the organization to thrive. They also invest in their people, and they invest in diversity and inclusiveness. And I think that they look at that as a celebration of differences, and they see those differences as strength. And I also think that really strong organizations, just in my observation, value training, growth, and development for the people in those organizations. They foster the culture of learning and development and embrace new ideas. Those traits are all connected, and they all work together to build trust, to create high-performing culture, and also to enable organizations to provide outstanding services to the community. And those things really align with my strengths and with my core values, as well as the core initiatives that the city has established, those sustainable resources, safe and healthy, innovative infrastructure, and urban experience. I think really, all of those things, especially the latter three, you really can't have unless you have a solid people organization behind those initiatives. So, I just wanted to say again, I'm really humbled by the opportunity to be entrusted with this responsibility. I consider it an honor and a privilege to continue to serve the city in a different role. And I'm committed to putting my heart and my passion and energy into all the facets of this work. And I will work really hard to earn your trust and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Amber? Any comments? All right. Seeing none. Well, Amber, thank you for your service on the civil service. And we trust that one of your first jobs as HR will be finding a great replacement for yourself. And, because we need to grow those both together to strengthen our city. Let's take a roll call vote then. And I'll start with Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Amber. We look forward to great things.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Can I just add, Amber's hilarious. She said, today was her first day on the job, and she was hoping it wasn't going to be her last.
Yep, okay.
Thank you so much for the unanimous confirmation, and for the rest of some of our cabinet who stayed late at work to support her. And I speak for them to thank you for this wonderful addition to our city and to my cabinet. So, thank you, council.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Great choice. Let's go to the item seven that we moved from the consent agenda.
Contract extension with Superiorian LLC for continued joint administration of the false alarm program from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Estimated revenue, $330,000 per year.
All right. Councilmember Cathcart, I know you have some questions. I see Assistant Chief Lundgren's on the line, so.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I had some back and forth with Chief Mydl and Sergeant Griffin. And I think I got my questions in particular answered. And I don't want to hold up renewing this. I think it's an important program to continue. But there might be some tweaks that I would offer down the road to the program, so.
Okay. There any other council commentary?
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart, I had a conversation about this earlier today. And I want to make sure that going forward, we are talking about alarm, so if you have an alarm company that is security for your home, that is what we're talking about here. We're not talking about folks who may call the police because they suspect there's a prowler, or there's something going on, and the police come and find nothing, and then charge them with a false alarm. That would be a deterrent to people calling the police. So, can we clear that piece up for everybody?
Yeah. So, this is if you have a private alarm system, and it triggers a false alarm. There's a program that we have with a company that monitors that, and then can charge for those false alarms to replenish the funds that it takes to respond to them. But yes, as you said, if anyone actually calls 911, they do not get charged for calling the police. So, or a crime check, for that matter. Any other commentary on this matter, then let's take a roll call vote. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That matter is passed. And we're now down to Resolution 0049. If you would read that, Ms. Fister.
And this one I'll read in its entirety.
Speak right into that mic.
Resolution number 2020-0049, a resolution requesting the delayed enforcement of Ordinance C. 35870 prohibiting the use of so-called mosquito devices. Whereas council adopted Ordinance C. 35870, June 22, 2020, to prohibit the operation of so-called mosquito devices. And whereas Mayor Woodward vetoed Ordinance C. 35870 on July 2, 2020. And whereas, there remains a need for the enforcement of basic health, safety, and livability standards downtown so that as our economy recovers, people of all ages can enjoy all the amenities and services in downtown Spokane. And whereas, the City Council proudly supports the Spokane Police Department's new downtown precinct and wants to provide sufficient time that the new facility to begin operations so that we can see if additional measures or strategies beyond the new facility are needed to keep people of all ages safe and healthy downtown, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council requests that the Spokane Police Department refrain from enforcing Ordinance C. 35870 until either December 1, 2020, or 60 days after the opening date of the new downtown police precinct, whichever occurs first.
We don't have any public comment requested on that. I had a chat with the mayor today and learned that the new precinct is going to open sometime next month. So, it'd be sometime in October that this might start being enforced. And the theory is that with officers based downtown and walking the beat, they would be a much more effective deterrent to people sleeping in entryways than these particular devices. And so, we are actually going to have a vote later today about whether or not to override the mayor's veto and empower that ordinance. But if that should be overridden, this would ensure that it wouldn't go into effect or be enforced until after police officers are on the beat and able to take care of this. So, that's the purpose of it. Any council commentary? Councilmember Mum?
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to share with my fellow councilmembers that I had some people confused, and came up to me over the last week and said, what's wrong with killing mosquitoes? Why are you not letting people, you know, being able to take care of mosquitoes on their own property? I said, no, it's a noise that sounds like a mosquito. So, it was more than one person. So, people thought it was a bug device, as opposed to that the noise was not just spilling onto their property, but spilling off of the property. And that was one of my biggest concerns on this, is that it's not just what happens on the property. The sound travels all over the place. So, we have other land use stuff that we don't let people do that with light and that sort of thing. So, it's being consistent there. But I said I'd share that. It's mosquito noise.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so, I guess my reasons for voting no the first time still stand, and I do plan to not change my vote on the underlying veto override. I'm going to support this. I do think at least delaying this at least buys us some time, and hopefully will make sure that it's implemented in a, I think, a better fashion. But I'm still not convinced, though, that we're going to have full staffing and 24/7 officers on the beat downtown once the precinct opens, or even anytime this year. And so, that's part of my hesitation on this. But I certainly am open to revisiting the concept once that happens, probably next year. But at this point in time, I'm going to keep my no vote on the underlying ordinance, but I will support this addition.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. I happen to have a business where I am challenged with some of the issues that the downtown businesses are challenged with. And I do believe until that precinct is up, that they need somehow to secure their business. Until you've had your livelihood on the line of being threatened, or you cannot provide for your family, it's a different perspective. So, I will support this to give the precinct time to get up and running, to give those business owners some other options, or something else to look at, come up with a better mousetrap to help them. But I did indeed feel they needed some additional time during this transition. So, I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other council, other council commentary? I'll just say that I'm supporting this resolution. I was really inspired by Councilmember Wilkerson of really wanting to get that precinct down. I do own a small business right downtown, very close to the Bus Plaza, right at Ground Zero, of a lot of complaints about conduct downtown. And I think that the most effective thing are good community building downtown. I've been a strong supporter to get the police precinct downtown for a long time. I thought it was sad that they moved it, because when people can get into relationship with people, and business owners, and walk the beat, and know what belongs and what doesn't. And now that we have committed to really having shelter for people, we can move people from a very unsafe situation of asleep in an entryway where they're vulnerable to people, to a safe place to sleep. So, I think this is a great hand-in-hand with the mayor's plan of the downtown precinct. And of course, I'm going to support it. With that, we'll take a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents an aye. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That passes, and that moves us to the next ordinance.
Ordinance C. 35908, establishing official city policy relating to reductions in night-by-night shelters, enacting a new section 18.05.030 to the Spokane Municipal Code.
And as I mentioned before, we substituted some language there to take into account some commentary we had from members of the Continuum of Care Board and Community Health and Human Services Board. We have one person signed up, Anne Wiggum, who I believe is from the CHHS Board. And if you can hit star three, or not?
Star three.
Oh, all right. Sorry, Anne, thanks for your service. Anyway, any other commentary on this? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I, it's a struggle for me. I agree with pretty much the intent of the entire ordinance, but there's just one piece in there that I don't think we can take out, that I just have a problem with. And that's the last line of Section 2, talking about the preferred approach of housing first. And I just fundamentally believe that there are some individuals who have, whether it's a need for medical or drug treatment, and they need that simultaneous with housing, but not necessarily housing first. And so, that's my only hesitation on this. And so, that's why I'll vote no on the measure. But the rest of it, the intent on sheltering night-by-night, that portion, I'm fine with. It's just codifying the term "housing first" in our local code is my concern.
Sure. Thank you. Any other commentary? I see, Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you, Councilmember. I did speak with Anne earlier today about this ordinance, and she is in support of it. It just needs a little bit more clarity. But I also want to bring out that we thank our partners, the Continuum of Care, the county, and all the other small cities around Spokane that contribute to this effort. I hear Councilman Cathcart, just we're trying to establish a good baseline for our shelters going forward. I share it with the committee. We're dealing with people. So, this ordinance will probably be evolving as things evolve for their chair going forward. But I felt we really need a good baseline for us all to work from, and for the administration to work within. So, I will be supporting this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Other council commentary? All right. I will just finish with, you know, the heart of this ordinance is putting into law what council, for the last five years that I've been on, has been urging, and that is not to precipitously close housing shelters, night-by-night shelters, just suddenly, and then basically flooding the streets with people who are homeless, and they find wherever they can. And it's not always sanitary. It's not always safe for them, or perceived safe by other people. And so, I've been happy with this new mayor and administration. And she has embraced the idea that we should not do that anymore. And so, I appreciate that. The mayor and I have been meeting weekly with Spokane County and City of Spokane Valley, and the Vista Foundation, and others to put into place a regional response to homelessness, which has been lacking, frankly. But the Continuum of Care Board, which is countywide, and our own CHHS Board, which is citywide, they've really been working hard. They have a five-year plan to end and prevent homelessness. And it's really starting to click. We have more work to do, so that it's truly a regional effort and funded regionally. But we're closer now than we've been since my time on City Council. So, I want to commend everyone. This ordinance totally supports that regional effort. And with that, we'll take a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents an aye. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. On to our last matter.
Council consideration of mayor veto of Ordinance C. 35870 prohibiting the use of so-called mosquito devices, amending sections 10.08d.030, 10.08d.050, and 10.08d.140, and enacting a new section 10.08d.145 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
All right. Any council commentary on this? Councilmember Burke?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman and also Councilmember Wilkerson for, you know, communicating with us on how maybe we can make this work. I don't know if we have all the votes here, but I'm hoping that we do. Because I think this just shows the sign of what type of community we want in our city, and what type of people we want downtown. And I'm thoroughly disappointed by the reaction to our mayor on vetoing this. I feel that it made a statement that we don't want young people, or, you know, people who are experiencing homelessness in our downtown core. Yet, previously, when we had our protests, we were allowing vigilantes downtown with machine guns in the core. And that was okay. And so, I just wanted to just thank everybody on this council for realizing what kind of community we want, and the future that we hold here. And I'm just so happy that our council came together on this issue, and really wants to fight for a safe community in our, in our region.